Welcome to the first fully virtual City Commission meeting in the City of Paducah ever. We just keep making history every day. Unfortunately, it's not for a great reason, except that we're keeping each other safe. So, thank you all for adapting and adjusting to this new normal. Before we get started, I just want to set some kind of ground rules for those watching out there, and just so you know kind of what we're doing and how we're doing things tonight. It will look differently than it does typically when we're all in the chamber together. We do have the majority of our directors, our city manager, our city clerk, and our assistant city manager on the call with us today, so you might see a few of their faces pop up every now and then, but they are here to answer any questions that the commission might have for things that we're going to discuss tonight. I also want to remind the community that's watching that we have committed to stick with business that has been underway for the city, and so that's what we're doing. We realize that we don't have public comment opportunity tonight in a virtual meeting, and we want to be thoughtful about those kinds of decisions that we're making for that reason. Also, one other change before I move on is we're going to ask our city clerk to actually read the motion for us. Typically, in these meetings, you will see a commissioner read the motion, but for simplicity's sake, we're going to ask the city clerk to read the motion, and then I will most likely move them and get a second to be able to put that on the table. So, moving forward, typically, we start with roll call, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And tonight, in place of an invocation, we're going to actually ask you all to join us in a moment of silence to be thinking about those that we have lost in our community to the COVID virus, to those whose families have been impacted by this, and so if you'll join me, we'll take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you all so much for joining us. And next, we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I'm going to try to stand up. I don't know if all of you are going to try to stand up, but I'm going to attempt to. And while we're going to get a bunch of bellies in this one, aren't we?
Step out of it.
Yeah. Step out or move your camera. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance. Thank you all. All right, city manager, are there any deletions tonight to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor, there are none.
Okay. And we're going to start with our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight for discussion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, okay. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the March 31, 2020 called meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah. Receive and file documents, personnel actions.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Thank you, and roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'll ask the city clerk to read the first item for, looks like, emergency ordinance.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce and adopt an emergency ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of funds in the Small Business Relief Fund in the form of grant award to businesses that meet certain criteria and declaring an emergency to exist. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes the criteria for businesses applying for a grant from the Small Business Relief Fund and the eligible expenditures for which funding must be used. Further, this ordinance authorizes the finance director to appropriate $150,000 of the $250,000 currently in the COVID-19 stimulus MR0079 project for the Small Business Relief Fund program upon approval of applications submitted in the form of $2,000 grant to the first 75 awarded recipient. Further, this ordinance authorizes the finance director to appropriate the remaining $100,000 as matching grant in the form of one-to-one matching funds received through donations. Those grants will also be in the form of $2,000, but the number of businesses awarded will be determined by the amount of funds donated.
I move to approve the emergency order as read, please.
Second.
Thank you. Really quickly, I may have some questions or discussion you want to have about this, but I do, I always want to say thank you to the partners who helped us put this together magically within two days several weeks ago. We worked with the Community College, Ray La Bridges, and Kevin O'Neil. We also worked with the Community Foundation and Tony Watkins, and our community partners were so committed to putting something together very quickly for the quick relief for our small businesses, and I just want to make sure we all understand what that means and what it took, really, because it took us having to really put down our perfection goggles and putting on our "let's get some relief to our business" goggles, and I really appreciate that. It's not often how we operate, but it's really important that we operate that way right now, especially for these small businesses. I also want to take a moment just to say a big thank you for some of the significant donations that we've received from the community. We received $5,000 from the Charity League this week. We received $2,500 from Jeannie and Joe Framdom, and another $2,500 today from Bacon Farmer and Workman and Markham Engineering. Those are significant contributions to this fund. We've also had others donate anonymously. We've had other PayPal donations come through. So, right now, we are at a little over $20,000 raised at the Community Foundation, and with matching the dollars with city funds, that'll be $40,000 so far. So, the goal is to get all the way up to that $100,000 mark, and we're continuing to do that. I know, Commissioners, you've been making your own fold calls. Thank you so much for the work you've done to kind of ask your friends and your colleagues and the people in your network to also support this, and so I know we're going to be able to make an impact. I'm looking forward to the second round already. We had a little over 300 applicants, as you probably saw in your email, apply for this fund. Not all of those are eligible, so they're still going through the screening process to make sure that we know who's eligible amongst that group, so we'll know how many applicants applied. So, we're not going to get to everyone, and I know that's so unfortunate at this point, but I'm hoping with the second round, we might be able to get to those applicants. So, with that, I'd open it up for comments or questions for the team, from anyone.
For the second round, are you going to wait for a certain amount of time? Are we going to go ahead and do the second round as we get money?
We haven't really circled back yet. We haven't had a chance to debrief from round one, and I imagine we'll get together and have that conversation with the team that put that first round together, just to kind of see what the pros and cons are from all the angles. If you all have opinions about that, please share that with us as we get into that meeting, but we kind of wanted to get all the checks out for round one and then circle back on how we might do round two. Any other comments or questions? I know Tamra's on here. Tamra, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, Madam Mayor, you've summed it up beautifully.
Okay, I didn't want to miss anything. Okay, well, if we don't have any questions, everyone's okay, then I'm going to ask Lindsay to call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 2B, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce and adopt an emergency ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract through non-competitive negotiations with a qualified contractor to make certain repairs to a building adjacent to the former Kresgey Building site that resulted from the demolition of the Kresgey Building and ratifying the city manager's declaration of an emergency. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance ratifies the city manager's determination of an emergency and authorizes the execution of an agreement for emergency repairs to the building located at 314 through 315 Broadway in accordance with the scope of work and specifications developed by the city's consulting structural engineer. Further, this ordinance declares an emergency to exist due to the need for immediate action to prevent public harm and property damage that could result from the instability of the building.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? City manager, do you want to make any comments about this item?
I sure can, Madam Mayor. This is basically working on the building that's owned by Jay Campbell, that wall there. We did have another partial collapse, the parapet, two storms ago. We did go in, secure that, and this is basically taking, making sure we solidify that exterior brick wall there, and we'll actually have that part of the process totally done after this contract is executed and the construction's completed. We will have one more wall to work on, that's the region's bank wall that'll be coming in the future.
And I know that we had put out, we did an RFP process for Kresgey, but I don't remember in the turmoil of where we've been, where we are on that. Can you give us a quick update on that process?
Unless Tamra saw something that I didn't see, none were received.
Oh.
No proposals. Unless Tamra caught them, and I didn't catch them at City Hall, but the deadline has come and passed, and I did not receive any packets. Tamra, did you receive any packets by chance?
No, we received no packets, but it is a little unfortunate, the timing in which the RFP was let and the onslaught of the COVID-19 incident.
Yes.
Anyone who might have been considering finalizing a packet at the end might not have followed through.
That's true.
Yeah, okay. Well, at least we'll have it stabilized, so we can circle back when it's appropriate. All right, any other questions for the city manager on this item? If not, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And city clerk, I'll ask if you'll read item 3A for us.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closing of a portion of an alley between 160 and 200 Bruce Avenue and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of a portion of an alley between 160 and 200 Bruce Avenue and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think we might have some clarification on this one that we need to address from the last meeting. City manager, would you like Rick to address that, or do you want to?
Well, since I messed it all up last time, I'm going to defer this to Rick, because this is...
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, reference to this alley off of Bruce Avenue. Bruce Avenue is a small street off Pecan Drive over near Heartland Church. There's a couple of properties back there that, we have a right-of-way that goes back there, but it's just serving three properties, and they happen to be part of the same family. And so, what's happening is they're asking for it to be closed, and we're going to have a reciprocating easement or an ingress-egress easement going to those properties in the event those places may sell, but right now, that right-of-way is basically being used as a private driveway, and they want to be able to do with it and make the improvements, but not necessarily make the improvements to the city standard, because it's just serving their own houses. So, this is something that we've supported, saying, we get it, there's no sense in building a city street to three houses, and if you all can work that out, so they have. And so, basically, the application that you see before you is my recommendation for how this could be worked and be worked well with the public.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Rick at this time? If not, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
Okay, city clerk, would you read item 3C, please?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Jim Smith Contracting LLC in the amount of $479,350.50 for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 project and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement in an amount of $479,350.50 with Jim Smith Contracting LLC for the Greenway Trail Phase 5 project and authorizes the transfer of $50,000 from the Boyle's Estate Trust into the Greenway Trail Phase 5 project account.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And any questions tonight on this item? I think last week, or last meeting, we had asked for some detail on how we were paying for this project, and we received an email with some of those details. City manager, would you like to discuss that, or do you have someone else that would like to address that?
Yeah, as was shared by Lindsay Parish, I think it was a little late last week, she got that out to everybody. The details of the payment is basically, the project itself is grant-funded, and the match comes from a local trust, so there'll be no direct expense through the general fund or investment fund. Anything to add to that, Rick?
No, generally, we're excited that we get to report that the project did come within our budgets, so our budgets have prepared for it, and we're excited about getting started on that real soon.
Can you show us the picture of that, Phase 5?
Lindsay, can you bring that up? Can we bring that up on the screen, or maybe Steve Chino could bring that up on the screen that others could see?
It's very impressive.
There it is. Okay, Steve, if you could blow it up a little bit. I'll go ahead and talk about what you're looking at, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. To the right, I want to, I'll say to the right of the drawing, that curve there you're looking at is the Water Street-Jefferson Street intersection, like if you were going through the flood wall where the end of the murals are, and that's where you would enter this portion of what we refer to as Schultz Park now. But these are going to be the upgrades that you see. You're going to see an extension of the Greenway Trail moving from west to east, or excuse me, from north to south on this particular, which is left to right on this drawing. You see where the colors end on the left side, on the left side of the drawing, where those colors end is actually what you've already got constructed. That's the end of Greenway Trail Phase 4, so this is physically going to connect and move toward downtown. What you're looking at is, you see that thing that looks like a horseshoe? That's because, in general, the way that works, it's a one-way coming through the Jefferson Street opening, so we can only allow cars to enter, but if we have cars on the riverside, they can come and loop around and then go button-hook and then go out like a cul-de-sac. And there in the middle, where, if you know where you're at, Farmer's Market is just to the south, excuse me, just to the west on this drawing, and then this is going to be our main promenade coming into the riverfront for that, for pedestrians to come in there. Steve, could you scroll to the bottom? I think there's another sheet down at the bottom.
Rick, this is all on the riverside of the flood wall?
Yes, Commissioner Wilson, it's, the bottom or the base of the colors that you see on the map, that's the flood wall boundary. That's where this is all abutting to the flood wall boundary.
See, I think you can click the down arrow. Do you see that down arrow, page one of two?
Might drag the bar over there. Drag the bar over to the far right-hand side. I don't know. But what I was going, yeah, that bar, can you drag that? No, that's not working.
I want to do it with my finger.
Yeah. We all have my center hand, and we want to help. We want to do this with ourselves, you know, we found that last week during our meetings. But what I was trying to illustrate was, there's another sheet down there that shows a cross-section as if you were walking through the park, what you might see as far as illusion of what you might see if you're walking the trail. The brown portion is the actual trail itself, and you recall the two, I guess, monoliths that, the towers that are there? We've left those towers in place for a feature. We have not, we do not have a final plan on how to finish those towers. It's something that we're leaving up to others to decide in our community, but it is a feature that is available. It can be an overlook, it can be an artist's rendering of what we want our guests coming to Paducah would see the first thing if they were coming from the river, so those towers are left there intentionally for that to be finalized.
That's great. Well, this will be in the packet, I'm hoping, or if we can get this online somewhere, as we're telling the story about that project that's being completed. I think I saw in Melanie's notes that this was a grant from 2014.
Right.
Goes to show you, it takes a while to get this stuff going, so.
Right.
Yep. Any other questions for the team at this time? All right, if not, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll. Thank you, Rick.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 3C this time. I said that last time. 3C, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a professional services contract with BFW Engineering and Testing Incorporated in the amount of $250,000 for environmental services for the Paducah Riverfront Infrastructure Improvement Project Build Grant. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement in an amount of $250,000 with BFW Engineering and Testing Incorporated for the environmental assessment services for the Paducah Riverfront Infrastructure Improvement Project, the Build Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, we discussed this last time as well. Does anyone have any questions that they want to ask the team or discuss with the commission? This is our Department of Transportation grant that we won last fall, just to remind everyone, we were awarded $10.5 million from the federal government. That money is sounding much nicer now even than it did then, because we are going to need infrastructure investments into our community as we get out of the situation that we're in. So, this is the engineering portion of, sorry, my dog just walked in from a walk, and he is literally running in circles in my room, and so, I'm so sorry, I just got really distracted. Okay, anyway, so, this is the environmental portion of this project that we have to get going in order to get this thing kicked off. I'm going to be quiet. Does anyone have any questions or things they want to add to that?
Mayor, I would like to just share with the commission, you did say that this was the environmental portion. This is the first leg that we have to complete to qualify for our money, and then, once we've qualified environmentally, then we can move forward with the design. So, following, immediately following this, we'll have a design contract, but we got to clear the environmental hurdle first, just to make sure that everybody, that the general public understands what hurdles we got to go through first.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And moving forward, I'll ask the city clerk to read the item 4A, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission and amending the Paducah zoning map for property located at 1128 and 1140 Broadway and 1143 Kentucky Avenue from the B3 general business zone to the M2 heavy industrial zone classification. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Rezone property located at 1128 and 1140 Broadway and 1143 Kentucky Avenue from B1 general business zone to M2 heavy industrial zone classification and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Tamra, would you like to pitch us up on this item?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. This particular rezoning petition is 3.23 acres that is on our Broadway frontage, and this particular lot extends from Broadway over into Kentucky Avenue. It is next to the Terracotta Fronted Building that you see on Broadway. Currently, Broadway Interiors is the occupant of that. They, as the owner of the vacant property next door, came to the Plan Commission to ask for it to be rezoned to the M2 classification. Currently, it is Zone B3. B3 allows a wide variety of business uses. M2 allows for manufacturing, but most specifically, what they wanted to do, want to do, is construct a climate-controlled storage facility next to their existing facility. However, the only classification that that particular use is permitted is the M2 district. This was a heavily discussed application, to say the least. It was continued on numerous times. However, the Plan Commission challenged staff and the applicants to come together, and we believe that we have come together and found the appropriate solution for this, because as you can imagine, heavy manufacturing on Broadway is not the ideal, nor is it wanted by the applicant. However, they wanted to move forward with their climate-controlled storage. So, what we have before you is the recommendation of the Plan Commission for approval, but it contains two conditions, one of which, or they both apply to the use of the property. The first one is that all B3 uses are permitted to be done on this property, and the single use of climate-controlled storage, and that's pulling that out of the M2 classification and allowing it on this site, as well as all the B3 uses which they currently can do under their current zoning. all the B3 uses which they currently can do under their current zoning. And to make sure that the climate-control facility fits in with Broadway, because Broadway is, is our iconic street, the Commission has also requested that the design be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of permits. We look forward to this project. It took a little while to get everyone comfortable with the solution to accomplish the property owner's goals while preserving the Commission's goals. And so, I'm very happy to come before you today with a recommendation of approval. And I do urge you and the Commission to accept the report and move forward with that approval recommendation at your next reading.
Thank you, Tamara. Does anyone have any questions about this item?
Is this, yeah, I do. Is this, are they going to be using this for their business? Is this for rent, for individuals to come in and rent storage units? How is this being done?
This is, this storage facility will not be restricted as far as who can use it. However, the owners of the property have a business next door that does restoration after fires and things like that. And as, in with doing that, frequently, their customers need a place to store their materials and possessions while they're undergoing renovation and restoration of their house or business that has been suffered damage. And so, that will be the primary users of this facility. However, it's not restricted to that exclusively. It would be generally, it could be used by anyone in the public that would so contract with them.
Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you, Tamara. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read item 4B, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amend Section 106-65 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to clarify the due date for fiscal year-end, non-calender year-end business license filers and to correct certain grammatical errors. Said non-calender year-end business license filers shall file the return and application on or before the 15th day of the fourth month following the close of the business entity's fiscal year.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Let's see, who had this item? Oh, Mr. Perkins, there you are.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and the whole gang. The purpose of this amendment is really a point of clarification. There are a couple of misspelled words that we fixed in the ordinance. This ordinance has been in place for over 10 years and nobody noticed it until just the other day. This got delayed right before the virus issue. Has nothing at all to do with extension of due dates. It has all to do with correcting bad words or incorrectly used words. And in Section C in particular, this is for fiscal filing folks for non-calender year ends. It had the word "may file." We thought it would be best to say "shall file." And that's really what it does.
All right. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. City Clerk, I'm going to ask if you'll read item 4C, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Crowell Associates for endpoint IT protection services and threat monitoring in the amount of $45,000 for the Paducah Information Technology Department and authorizing the Finance Director to transfer $45,000 from the administrative contingency account to the computer software account as funding for the professional services agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves a professional services contract with Crowell Associates for endpoint IT protection in an amount of $45,000, including incident response remediation services, Red Canary Managed Threat Detection Services, and Carbon Black Endpoint Sensors. Further, this ordinance approves the transfer of $45,000 from the administrative contingency account to the computer software account for payment to Crowell Associates.
So moved? Don't fight for it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Chino?
Yeah, so, just, it's pretty self-explanatory. This stemmed back from the threat actor that we fought against back at the beginning of the year. Whenever that happened, we installed some new software. We got another team involved to do threat point, or endpoint monitoring. And we have engaged with a few other companies, a few other firms to see what was out there. And this, this seems like a pretty good fit. They're already installed. You know, a lot of the labor was done the first time around and the price is very competitive. And this includes, you know, 24-hour monitoring, so that even when we're not here, they have a team that's making sure, somebody's looking at our stuff even when we're, you know, taking a few naps here and there. So we're, we're pretty excited to get it in. You know, we've been using it now for two and a half, three months, and it's good stuff. And so, we're, we're pretty excited to go ahead and move forward with the project and get it online 100%. You know, it's already on there, but this will just seal the deal to help us sleep a little bit better when we're not here. So if you have any questions, though, be happy to entertain them.
I have a question. Is this the only cost we assume is associated with the full project to get up and running? Or will there be future licensing agreements, maintenance costs, those kinds of things?
So there is a maintenance cost per year. We wanted to, we didn't do an extended contract, obviously, because of the climate that we're in. You can get better rates by doing that. But we're going to, we're going to ride it out for this first year and see what kind of return we get on our investment. We don't foresee that to be bad. We think it'll be good, but at that point, we'll make a decision if we want to go with a longer contract, which will bring the price down. So there is a nearly maintenance fee that is going to recur from this, but we're already working to secure how we're going to pay for that into the future and hopefully get into a multi-year term that will bring that cost down.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Comments? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, City Manager?
I did have one point of clarification, Madam Mayor. When we had the, I guess, most recent press release went out, we talked about the collection of brush and how we're doing that now with the leaves and yard waste. And just want to make clarification point that we are still collecting it and that we have our units. In fact, they were out in front of my house today cleaning up on the street that I live on. So we are collecting it, but when we're doing that, that we're also doing that making sure that our employees are safe. So basically doing that in a way where they're protecting themselves, making sure they're not having any points of contact with materials unnecessarily. So it's a little bit slower for them, but still effective. But what we're asking our residents to do is, if you have your yard waste, your bags of leaves, or your brush out alongside the roadway, leave it out there and be patient. We're coming through, we will, we will collect it. But if you, if you do not have items out by the roadway, if you could hold off for us for a couple of weeks, allow us to catch up, and then we'll give you the all-clear to begin putting it back out again, that'll be a big help for us.
And we still have drop-off options as well?
No, we have, the compost facility has been closed for a while now. We closed it several weeks back. But as we progress through this, we're going to try to work a few things, get some things relaxed a little bit, and get some more things like that opened up. I even talked to Chris today about potentially looking at what it could look like for us to be able to do some drop-off of the composts to people who, upon request, that wanted in our community to kind of help them out too. So we're trying to do what we can do, but right now, we're just making sure we're working within the capacity that we have. But as we move forward over the next couple of weeks, I envision that we'll be able to do a little bit more.
Great. Is that the remainder of your comment?
That is it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the Commission tonight?
I would like to just address the pool and the splash pad situation. We are in a situation where we're trying to keep people apart. I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to move together, because some of us that are people, people, people-oriented are going crazy. And I know we've got some moms with some small children that are at home that are really going crazy. So, you know, opening the pool is something that we have to do, have to plan for our way in advance, as we have to hire people and get chemicals and it's expensive. So right now, we're not planning to do that, though. I talked with the City Manager, hadn't totally ruled that out if things improved dramatically. But obviously, it wouldn't be cost-effective to open at the end of July and close at the 1st of August. But splash pads are a little easier, so moms and dads out there, hang on. I'm going to ask every week if we can get closer to getting the splash pads open. And I've been assured that we are not completely shut in terms of not considering whether we could open those up to the public with probably some guidelines. We're probably all going to be doing things differently as we attempt to engage again. So I'm going to keep asking those questions, because I think we need some activity out there or we're going to go crazy inside our walls. Praying for better weather, too. Thank you.
I'm going to echo what Commissioner McElroy said. I'm hoping that we will be back up and operating sooner than we may be thinking. So I would like to just keep that on the forefront, if we could just have an open mind. If there's a way that we could get, I know they said that the splash pads would be the easiest to open back up, if we could be looking at some other things that we can help with. You know, I know the summer camps are important to a lot of families as well. So if we could try to make sure that there are things that we're doing for our community. You know, the kids are out of school right now, so obviously, I know the camps would be challenging from that part. If we can't be in school, they probably can't be in a camp either. But just to keep an open mind, if there are ways that we can bring those back, let's please try to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what you just said. These kids are bored out of their minds. We, we went by, I went by a couple of neighborhoods and just passed them by and you can tell by the games that they're playing that they're bored. They would never, they would never take a ball and bounce it off the carport wall. They wouldn't do that unless they were bored. So I'm with you guys to keep that in the forefront, and hopefully, this thing will start to turn. Mayor, I have one more piece I'd like to, just something's on my mind that I want to, I want to touch on briefly.
Sure.
Like so many other organizations, we, we're getting to a point where we are starting to, I've been doing this a while, Jonathan and the guys down in finance, looking at our own financial structure and what this virus is, what ripple effects it's going to cause us long-term. And obviously, when something like this happens, you start in-house and look at what you can do in-house. And our guys are really good at looking at what they can, what they can cut, wherever there is some fat, and it's not a lot, but what they can do also, and I'm going to bring this out, that we should also make sure that that's not the only place that we're looking. We have, we will probably, when you look at our revenue situation, we're probably, when you look at everything on the table, we're probably in a little better shape than some other municipals here in the state and pretty much around the country. So we shouldn't be shy or apprehensive to use funds that are available to us to help us through that time where the business license will have to be postponed a minute. The payroll tax, that's a large, that's a large piece of our revenue stream, something to tide us over, to get us through this situation. And so, when we have, when we have access to $20.5 million, we should really look at that, how can that, how, how will that help us from this point moving forward? Obviously, a lot of priorities, a lot of top priority things have changed. Who saw this coming? I mean, this, this, this is one of these things that it's once in a lifetime, if that. So we need to make sure that we are looking at that, we have that, those funds available, because the most expensive part of any organization is our, is our employees. And they are the lifeblood of our organization. So as we look at this from a financial spot and we start to nail down on where funds are and where projections of where they're going to be, we should make sure that we are utilizing the lens and looking at the entire financial picture, because I think if we do that, then we could probably weather this until we get on down the road and hopefully, we restart this economy that has a lot of people out of work and there's not a lot of payroll taxes coming in. So just want to put that out there and encourage our guys to hang tight.
Commissioner Abraham, one point on that. Last week, there were a lot of, there were some programs announced for municipalities like us that could become federal grants, or federal loans that would become grants. So I had asked Jim to make sure that we are looking at all of those options as well that would be available to our city, just like they would be to cities across the country. Everyone's going to be in the same predicament and need that assistance, just like our businesses and our unemployment. So I hope that our Grants Department is looking for all of those resources as well.
Well, I can attest that they are. We were just texting or emailing today, myself and Jim and Ty, about all of those opportunities that have come out. There's community development block grants that have been opened up, and we're actually going to have a video call together this week to talk about all the opportunities for those CDGB, BG, I never can get that right, grants that are out there for many categories. So you're both absolutely correct. All options are on the table and should be on the table at this point. And I also think it's important, and we heard the City Manager say this last time, and John, you're welcome to say it in your own way if you want to, but, you know, right now, it's about collecting information and it's about understanding, yes, there's some speculations on what we have to predict in the future, but there's also a reality of being able to see how this next quarter pans out and to be able to use that as a better predictor. Because the last thing we want to be doing is guessing at this stuff. We want to have something that backs it up. And John, thank you. I know that you were on the meeting last time, and I think we owe you a lot of gratitude for how much intense work that I know you and your team have been doing along with the City Manager. So thank you for what you're doing. He's nodding his head, everyone. He's still on mute.
He's muted.
He's still on mute. We'll have to get him prepared for his major presentation when it comes closer to actually talking real budget talk, so we'll save your voice for that. Any other Commissioners have anything? I want to share something, a little personal, actually, just to drive home the importance of where we are. And this just happened to me today, actually, so I'm going to try to do this without crying. So we, I mentioned this on my video last night, that, you know, I keep using the marathon analogy of, if you've ever ran a marathon or know anyone that did or has, there's this analogy of what they call the wall. And when yours, depending on who you are and how in shape or out of shape you are, somewhere around mile 14 to 15, or even maybe up to 18 or 19, you start to hit a wall. And in that wall, it's really about mind over matter. You know your body's ready, your body can make the 26 miles, but your mind tells you that you can't. And I think we're getting close to that wall in our community with this issue. We are now a month in, the governor's first action was March 7th. We are now a month into this. We've probably been feeling the real pressure for about two weeks. We've been living these lives that are difficult. We've been asking ourselves hard questions about how we're going to take care of our kids who are stuck at home with us. We're going to educate our kids at home. We're going to figure out how to pay our bills. And there's a lot of hard, hard things going on in our community. But there's a reason why we're doing it. And it is so important that we not forget that those people that we took a moment of silence for earlier, that lost their lives to COVID, they matter. And they matter because they're our neighbors, they're our friends, and they're our family. And just today, I found out that one of my family members has been exposed. And let me tell you, if you haven't experienced that moment, when you think that someone you love might- when you think that someone you love might, no, they know, by the way, they've been exposed to someone who's positive, that moment of your heart drop is real. It's human, and it's hard, and it is scary. And I want to make sure that as a community, we are always thinking about that. When we wake up in the morning, and this is harder than it ever has been, and we're debating about who should open the economy and who should not open the economy, and when's the right time, and how much we want to play on splash pads, and how much we want to swim in pools. This is about our lives. And so, I wanted to share that with you all, because it hit me like a ton of bricks today when I got a phone call that said someone in my family has been exposed to someone positive. Our healthcare workers are experiencing this every day. So I know they're living this. But for me personally, it was my first moment of really having that sinking feeling that this has hit close to home for me. So thank you all for your continued support. I hope as leaders, and I'm looking at the staff, too, as leaders in our community, that we continue to remind people about how serious this is. You know, I know there are people recovering, and we can celebrate that. But we also know there are people dying. And we can do this. We're weeks out, we're months out from getting back to normal. But I've told you guys this before, I'm proud to be on your team during this time. I couldn't have ever imagined this would be happening to us as elected leaders and as a community. But I want to say thank you, and I wanted to make sure I shared my story with you tonight.
Tough times don't last, tough people do.
That's right.
We're good.
Yep.
We're good.
Well, thank you all. If that's all, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All right, all in favor? All right, thank you all. Great meeting. I'll see you soon.